City County Planning Commission, please come to order. Ms. Martin, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am, Commissioner Rich, Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance, Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Volkert, Commissioner Gay, Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am. Everyone's had a chance to review the minutes of the last two minutes, the January sixteenth and the February sixth. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If there's no corrections, then I'd ask for a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay, oh sorry, Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Unseld, Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Chairman Runner.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
Ms. Runner, I request that you order that the record include for tonight all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications for each witness. Finally, I'd ask that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
So ordered. You swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Agreed.
Thank you all. The January financial report was in the packet, if you have any questions on that? No questions? We do not have any letters of credit and performance bonds, the subdivision and site development plans, any question, any questions on those? No questions? Then we do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on. The first item tonight for public hearing, docket number 202003 DP, Southside Development LLC has filed an application to amend the general development plan, which are the development plan conditions on tracts of land containing approximately sixteen point five nine one two acres located at zero McClellan Road with frontage on Cedar Trail and McIntyre Street. The property is zoned RS1C, which is single-family residential with a general development plan. Have the staff report from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on December twelfth for the property outlined in yellow, as you mentioned, located just off of McClellan Road. And the applicants have applied to amend the development plan, specifically the development plan condition that relates to the home size that's required within the development, and I'll get to that in just a second, but first I'm gonna go through the rest of the maps here. So as you mentioned, the property is currently zoned RS1C. It was rezoned to RS1C in 2018. The current use of the property is agriculture, and the future land use map is moderate density residential. This future land use designation encourages areas developed for higher-density, single-family detached and attached, as well as semi-detached multifamily development, such as duplexes and townhouses, apartment buildings, condominiums, and mobile home parks. Densities in this land use should range between three and a half and thirteen dwelling units per acre. Moving on to the site characteristics review, this is the proposed layout with the proposed lots. The setbacks for the development will follow the setbacks in the RS1C zone. And under transportation infrastructure, as you mentioned, this property does connect with Cedar Trail Avenue, which is this connection here, and then also with McClellan Farms here on McIntyre Street. Under surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that there is a mixture of one- and two-story homes of varying ages in the area. And under building materials, staff has noted that the majority of homes in the Greystone subdivision are vinyl. The majority of homes in McClellan Farms are brick, stone, cement, siding, or other modern masonry or construction material. And with that, I'm just gonna jump on to the development plan and development plan conditions section. The main change for your consideration this evening is contained within number three. The applicants are proposing to reduce the minimum home size from sixteen hundred square feet to fourteen hundred square feet for the lots that are highlighted in blue. The proposal would keep the minimum home size of sixteen hundred square feet, that's the current minimum, for the lots that are within three hundred feet of McClellan Farms. So that would be, I don't know what color you would call that, like peach maybe? So that would be these lots here. So these lots would still have a minimum home size of sixteen hundred square feet, and then the proposal would reduce the minimum home size required to fourteen hundred square feet for the lots in blue. So that'd be for these lots here. So if you approve the change that's proposed this evening, the general development plan or the development plan condition would then read, "All exterior facades of principal structures located on the property will be constructed of at least eighty percent stone brick, LP smart siding, ephesus, or other cementitious or modern masonry materials, and each residence shall have an attached two-car garage. Plain-faced blocks shall be prohibited on all lots. All lots, any part of which are located within three hundred feet of the southern property line of the property adjacent to McClellan Farms subdivision, shall have a minimum of one thousand six hundred square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches and garage." So again, that would be for these lots here. "All other lots shall have a minimum of one thousand four hundred square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches and garages." Again, those would be for the blue lots. "This development plan condition shall remain a development plan condition only until recordation of a subdivision plat of the property, or recordation of restrictive covenants applicable to the property, after which this development plan condition shall be included in such plat and/or restrictive covenants, and shall no longer be a development plan condition." The only other changes proposed are contained within number thirteen, and that's basically just saying that the previous set of development plan conditions would be replaced by this new set. Section 312-8 of the zoning ordinance outlines the requirements to amend a development plan or a development plan condition, and states that "An amendment to any development plan condition for an approved development plan shall be approved only if the proposed amendment remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, and upon a finding that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question, which were not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the general development plan or development plan conditions, which are being amended." To address this item, the applicant submitted the narrative at the bottom of page four. "The applicants have stated that there has recently been significant new industrial and commercial development in the area. The market demand, particularly in this area, has undergone significant change in recent months, and a nearby development, Brownstone Farms, is being developed with similar building materials and even smaller home sizes. The proposed changes will address these changes in the area and will particularly meet the local needs as recently addressed in the city of Bowling Green housing study." On page five, under our focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated nine items. Two of those items the staff found to be in compliance, that would be LU111 and LU112, which look at the future land use map. The other items the planning commission should determine compliance, the first LU113, which looks at compatibility, next LU2 and LU2.1, which look at quality of development and character preservation, next HN1 and HN1.3, which look at infill development and compatibility of infill development, and finally HN2.1 and HN4, which look at suitability of the proposed housing type, and whether or not it would enhance the array of housing options available in the area. That is pretty much it for the staff report. I'll wrap up with the points to consider. Again, the main change proposed this evening relates to the minimum home size. First, the proposed development plan amendment is consistent with the future land use map and moderate-density residential future land use category. The proposed amendment complies with the applicable criteria addressed in the site characteristics review. And finally, the proposed amendment complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, and compatibility of the proposed changes to the general development plan should be determined by the planning commission. That's all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Well, the category reviewed really didn't change. I mean, from the first time through.
Right.
Okay.
Those are typically the items that are just kind of a gray area, and so based on the change that's proposed with the square footage, we just asked that you would reevaluate those items and, and see if...
And we're adding no new lots, same, same amount lots.
Right. The only change is the minimum square footage for the lots in blue.
Okay.
Why are they doing away with the garages? I see that's got a line through it. They're not putting garages on any of these houses?
They are, they just added it to the sentence before that. They just kind of restructured the way the sentence was worded. So each home would still have a two-car attached garage.
On both, both sides' houses?
Yes, every lot.
Sixteen.
Every lot would have that requirement.
Any other questions? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have anything that the applicant would like to add?
Well, Madam Chair, I just want you to know we're here. I'm Kevin Brooks, I represent the applicant. Factually, what we're doing is really, really simple, I think you all see that, so we don't have anything to add to that. We'd be happy to, Mr. Hammer, the representative, is here, we'd be happy to answer any questions you've got.
Thank you sir. Questions for the applicant commissioners? Do you have any questions from anyone in the audience? Any opposition to this request? Yes, if, just, if you could come to the mic, we'll, we'll get you one at a time. You can ask your question. Yes ma'am, I'm sorry, I hate to point when I don't know names, I apologize. Give us your name and address.
Abbott the Foley, and I live at 408 McIntyre Street.
And you, and you swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Yes ma'am, now you can ask your question.
I am also the secretary for the McClellan Farms HOA, and was asked to speak and bring up a few concerns.
Yes.
Ma'am, do you mind pulling the microphone down?
Sorry.
Thank you, that way we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. So McClellan Farms HOA had asked Jim, I am gonna butcher his name, Decezary, is that correct? Yes. Okay, to speak on our behalf with the builder of these lots. And I know that they had originally had the minimum to be sixteen hundred square foot with a minimum of eighty percent brick, hardy siding, et cetera. We personally would like there to be no changes at all, because the neighborhood is a continuation almost from our neighborhood, it's going to be on the same street. And I know they had talked back and forth, and they agreed to lowering the square footage, but continuing to keep the exterior the same. Some other concerns that we had, our HOA members pay annual dues of two hundred and seventy-five dollars, which includes neighborhood projects, improvements, we have bylaws enforced, maintenance. We want to ensure that our investments and home values are protected with any new addition next to McClellan Farms. Most of the new homes in McClellan's crossings will have addresses on McClellan Street, or McIntyre Street, excuse me, just like McClellan Farms. And although, although this is a separate neighborhood, any new homes built in McClellan crossings will directly affect the McClellan Farm homeowner, homeowners. We want to ensure that our investments in our homes and their continued financial and voluntary contributions are protected. Some of the main concerns we have are to possib- possibly place a fifteen-foot signage easement on the lots adjoining the south end of McIntyre Street and McClellan Farms, and erect a brick or stone wall with McClellan Crossing signs to differentiate the two neighborhoods. The second is to ensure that the HOA is required, that there is an HOA required for McClellan Crossing, and bylaws and covenants and restrictions that match or complement those of McClellan Also to place the new mail cluster boxes near the connection to Cedar Trail instead of the beginning of their neighborhood closest to ours. Another request is for a specific lot or area in McClellan Crossing to be designated for a playground or community or commons area. The reason being is that the HOA, McClellan Farms HOA members have paid for and continue to pay to maintain our common area facilities, including a playground at the front of our neighborhood. Those areas in McClellan Farms are for HOA members only, and it would be foolish to think that only members of the neighborhood and children of our only, only our neighborhood would enjoy those benefits as new homeowners move into McClellan's Crossing. So a playground or an area for that development would lessen the burden of McClellan Farms areas and not limit their use by homeowners of McClellan Farms. So that was one thing that we're asking that the developer consider. Another is that, a concern, I guess I should say, is that what will happen to the access road from McClellan Road to McClellan's Crossing currently? Will it be deeded to the owners whose lots back up to this lane? And if not deeded to the adjacent owners, who will be responsible for continued maintenance of this old lane? Pretty much the gist of our concerns is the HOA.
Thank you ma'am.
So, ma'am, I've got a question.
Yes.
So were these some of the concerns and things that were brought up when the, when it was first passed?
I was not at that meeting, so I'm not for sure. I do know, just collectively speaking with some of the neighbors in the neighborhood, as far as square footage, I think that was agreed upon then, and that was a big concern now that they're trying to change the square footage, and initially they were trying to change the...
I guess my question probably is more on from the HOA and those questions. Was that part of the original discussion when these were plotted?
I can't speak for that. Sorry. I wasn't serving then, so I don't know what, what they had discussed then.
And most of the issues that you've brought were things that came up in the zone change.
Okay.
And we're not doing a zone change tonight, we're just, the only thing they've asked for is just a change in the development on the size of the houses. They're not doing anything else.
Okay.
Is that your understanding too?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Because it seemed like the concerns that you had were for about a zone change type situation, and not just a little change in the development size of lots.
There, I hate to go back and read more, there are a few notes that they had sent that I can speak about concerning the lot size, or the house sizes. It was told to me, of course, I was not at the other meeting, so I can't speak for that, but the details and descriptions that were conveyed to Trapper, who is the builder for our neighborhood, by Barrett Hammer prior to the meeting, Trapper conveyed the details to, or the concerns to our neighbors, and Jim did as well as after the meeting. Most of McClellan Farms did not want a new neighborhood connection. They didn't feel as, though those, those houses are going to be as nice fitting into our neighborhood if they're smaller homes, and, excuse me, and they, they feel that they will lessen the value or attractiveness of McClellan Farms because of the, of the size of the homes that will be built. The request to modify and lower, I'm sorry, to modify the elements in the exterior and lower the minimum square footage was not welcomed by the HOA. Speaking, I know they had spoken back and forth on the square footage, it's not desired and may be tolerated if the exteriors are in keeping, but if, if they, obviously if they got to choose, the neighbors have all agreed that they do not want the square footage to be lessened.
Thank, thank you.
So, any questions?
Yes, you have a, I'm, we have a question.
So, I'm sorry.
Abbott the Foley.
Okay. So you said...
Turn the microphone for him.
Oh, sorry.
There is not one, but you can use this one, just push it over.
Yeah, just pull that over, it'll, there you go.
So, when you started, you said, Ms. Foley, I want to be sure I understood, that the HOA Board of Directors had met to talk about this, or?
We just have four board members.
All right. And you met?
Yes. We've had a meeting collectively with the neighborhood.
All right. And Mr. Decezary is on the board?
No, he is not.
No?
He was kind of our middleman spokesperson, so no one had to...
You asked Mr. Decezary to talk to Mr. Hammer about this?
Yes.
And are you aware that they did talk?
Yes.
And are you aware that Mr. Hammer did absolutely everything Mr. Decezary asked him to do before we came here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. That's all we got, thanks.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else that had a question? You'd state your name and address for us, please.
My name's Martin Yates, I live at 124 Cedar Trail Avenue.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
Uh, I wasn't aware, I'm kinda behind on this, but I'll try and make it brief. The lots are staying the same, correct? Okay, so that is a zoning issue, right? My next question is, is we've always had a problem with traffic on McClellan. The road is undersized. I've been with city annex, because we're city, talked to them about widening the road, doing improvements to the road. With this added development, have there been any looking at the road expansion improvements? Because there's only two ways out for each subdivision, that's through Cedar Trail and McClellan Farms.
Um, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but to that, tonight it's just about a, a binding element change.
Understand that.
But so the, all that is, that's not something we would take in consideration tonight. Because the lot, there, there's no additional lots being added.
Okay, my next question then.
Okay.
Okay, is why are they going to a smaller home? What's the purpose?
I think that's a question for Kevin or Barrett.
And so, it's in our application, and it, it was in the staff report, and we'd said it nicely. It's just really amazing how much things, how fast things change, and even though this is really a small change in terms of square footage, it's, in terms of market needs, it's pretty significant, particularly in that part of the county. So that's, that's why we're doing it, and I don't want to get out of order here, but I, I should have said in response to Ms. Foley, just so everyone knows, I think you all know, the, the standards in terms of construction materials stay the same, we, yes, we are going to have an HOA, yes, we are gonna have restrictive covenants, which will further enforce the materials and so forth, so we're, we will have all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question? Nothing else? Yes ma'am.
Name's Joanna Shake, 514 Maggie Court.
Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth, thank you. I am a resident of McClellan Farms as well, and I, now that you've educated me on the purpose of tonight, I'll shorten what my comment was gonna be. From my family's perspective, we would just prefer that both things stayed the same in the original proposal. I understand that they're gonna keep the exterior throughout the similar, but we would request that the original proposal with the size of all the properties be the same as well, just to add that continuity between our neighborhood and theirs.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nothing else? Commissioners, anything else? Any comments before I ask for a motion? Nothing else? Then I will call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 203003 DP. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, also find that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question, and request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witness public hearing.
Thank you sir, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am, the motion carried, thank you all. Next item, 202002 Flume, Judson, and Cheryl Hank have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately five point one seven acres located at 7007 Old Green Hill Road from agriculture to rural density residential, and on docket number 202003 Z County, the applicants have also filed to rezone that same land from agriculture to residential estate with the general development plan. Have the staff report from Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on November 25th for the property you see outlined here in yellow. As Chair Runner has already said, that property is zoned agriculture. Its current use is agriculture, as is mo- much of the area around it, and with some single-family residential as well. And the future land use map is currently designated agriculture, which the applicants would like to amend to rural density residential, and I will pull this up that we can reference as we go along. The applicants are wanting to rezone, if the Flume Amendment is successful, rezone from ag to RE residential estate to develop the property with a maximum of C, three single-family residential lots, as you see here. That proposed density, if that's approved, would be point five eight dwelling units per acre. This property is designated agriculture, and the proposed RE zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the rural density residential Flume category, should you all approve that, and may be appropriate if the planning commission determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. I will note that the majority of the property is heavily wooded, and I will go on to page two of your staff report, where you'll see the procedures for amending the future land use map, and the applicants have submitted the following narrative to address those criteria. "The applicant proposes the development of three residential estate lots, each of which shall be substantially larger than one acre. This is compatible with the surrounding area because it is consistent with many existing residential estate lots along Old Green Hill Road, including lots immediately contiguous to the applicant's property. The development plan conditions submitted in connection with the proposed zone change are entirely consistent with the existing binding elements in the immediate area." So I will move on to the site characteristics review, I'll just note, again, property's heavily wooded, the property also contains soil types that are classified as prime farmland and prime farmland if drained. and prime farmland if drained. The majority of the property contains soil types that are classified as somewhat limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields, and a small portion of the property contains soil types that are classified as very limited. The site design and compatibility review, noting the surrounding density, there are several large agricultural tracts in the vicinity, along with several rural density residential lots also scattered along Old Green Hill Road. Surrounding architectural features, the existing residential structures in the, in the area are a mixture of one and one and a half stories. The majority of homes in the area also have an attached two-car garage. Home sizes range from 801 square feet to 3,284 square feet with a median home size of 1,496. And the existing home on the property is one-story. Building materials review, the majority of the existing homes in the area are constructed of vinyl. There are a few homes that are brick and others that utilize brick or stone as an accent material. And the existing home on the property is brick. All of the existing residences along Old Green Hill Road are oriented to face Old Green Hill Road. Moving on to the development plan conditions, I'll go ahead and read those. Number one, access to the property will be coordinated with the Warren County Road Department. Number two, the property shall be developed for single-family residential use only. No mobile home or manufactured houses shall be permitted. Number three, the minimum square footage for all residential structures shall be 1,200 square feet, and each residence shall have an attached garage for at least a single car. Number four, all facade shall consist of brick, stone, vinyl, cementous siding, or similar modern construction materials. No facade shall consist of plain-faced or split-face block. Number five, the front setback for each residential lot shall be 60 feet. Number six, each lot shall be developed to preserve to the greatest extent practicable the mature trees located within 15 feet of side property lines and within 40 feet of rear property lines. For purposes of this development plan condition, mature trees are those with a diameter of eight inches or larger. Number seven, the principal residential structure on each lot shall be oriented toward Old Green Hill Road. And number eight, prior to the recordation of a plat of any new lot, a permit from the Barren River District Health Department shall be obtained for septic system approval. So I'll move on to the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 14 items. This application complied with three of them, and the rest are up to your determination. I'll read through those really quickly. LU 111 and LU 112. The proposal may comply with the Flume if deemed compatible with the surrounding area. The Flume Amendment is approved to rural density residential, and if the Planning Commission determines that the proposal is compatible and complies with LU 113. LU 2, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Planning Commission should determine compliance with LU 214, PR 17, and NCR 116, as the applicants agreed in Development Plan Condition Number 6, to preserve a small portion of the existing trees on the property. Planning Commission should determine compliance with NCR 241, and whether or not the proposed lots will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. And HN 21 and HN 4, the Planning Commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So I will go back to page one of your staff report and go over the points to consider. Planning Commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the Flume meets the criteria outlined in LU 114 of the comprehensive plan. If the Flume Amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the Flume and rural density residential category. Number, number two, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. The proposed general development plan complies with some of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the Planning Commission. So that is all I have. I believe the applicants are here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions? Commissioners, no questions? Anything the applicant would like to add? Nothing but that.
I have questions for the applicant, please.
Question for the applicant.
Okay. Driving around out there, is vinyl an absolute option? Or could we remove vinyl from the outside of the structures? There's not a lot of vinyl out there, and there's already a brick on this. But they consider removing vinyl?
So I don't have any pictures, but I think there's a whole lot of vinyl out there. That's what the staff report says, and I agree with it.
Majority of the homes in that immediate vicinity are vinyl.
I drove around several neighborhoods out there, and there's really not a lot. And we can't tell right across the street here.
There are some little subdivisions, generally in that part of the county, yeah, that if you go into them, they, they have some brick, but not here, I don't think.
And have they met with the road department? Are they going to try to do the driveways across from each other? Or are they gonna?
They have not met with the road department, but they're obligated to do so before they can build a house.
Okay, or, I mean, are they considering doing that where the driveways would be across from each other, anything like that, to make it safer? That road's not very wide.
I honestly don't know, but, I mean, if the county road department says that's what they should do, that's what they'll do. I don't think that they've gotten so far to house plans, frankly.
Other questions, commissioners? Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition? I'll ask for a motion. First, we need to act on the Flume Amendment. And should that pass, then we will act on the zone request change, zone change. So I will call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202002 Flume, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence, testimony, and witnesses in this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Second, we have a second, thank you.
Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Madison.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren. Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, and the motion carried. Now we need to act on the zone change request. I'll ask for that motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zone map amendment together with and conditional upon the general development plan, docket number 202003ZCO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and the action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, our requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witness at this public hearing.
Thank you, and we have a second, thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes, okay.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is docket number 202003 Flume. Philip and Gloria Moore have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately five acres located at Zero Gurkin Road, approximately 2,103 feet from the center line of the intersection of Gurkin Road and Dickens Street from agriculture. I can go ahead and call, yeah, yeah. Until he gets to the test, yes. From agricultural to rural density residential. Also, on docket number 202004Z County, those same applicants have filed to rezone that same land from agriculture to residential estate with a general development plan. Pause.
Meetings make you thirsty, don't they?
Paintage.
Thank you.
All right, we had a pre-application conference for the property you see outlined in yellow on January 10th. It's going to sound like I'm repeating myself from the last application, but property's zoned agriculture. Its current use is actually vacant, but the area around there primarily agriculture with some single-family is mostly what is out there. Future land use map is agriculture, which the applicants want to amend to rural density residential. If that, sorry, if that is successful, they would like to rezone from agriculture to residential estate to develop the property with a maximum of three single-family residential lots, as you see here. The proposed density would be .6 dwelling units per acre. So, just like the last one, the proposed RE zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the rural density residential Flume category, if you all choose to approve that. It may be appropriate if you all determine that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. So I will go on to page two, which has the procedures for amending the Flume, and the applicants submitted the following narrative to address that criteria. Compatibility with the surrounding development. The proposed development is located in a rural area of Warren County near the Gurkin Community and Ephraim White Park. A site characteristic review indicates that there are generally adequate facilities and infrastructure available to support the proposed development. The proposed use of this development shall be single-family. Building materials used, all block foundations shall be split-faced block, brick, or stone. Vinyl siding shall be allowed and matches the surrounding area. Houses must face the street. No manufactured homes shall be allowed. The density of this development is to be low-density to match nearby developments. Going down to the site characteristics review, the majority of the property contains a soil type that's classified as prime farmland and contains a soil type that's classified as somewhat limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. Site design and compatibility review, surrounding density, the area is comprised of several large agricultural tracts. There are also several low and rural density tracts, about half an acre, located in the vicinity. The tracts that are smaller than one acre predate the current zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Surrounding architectural features, the majority of the residences in the area are one-story. Building materials, the majority of the residences along Gurkin Road are constructed of brick, and there are a couple of homes that utilize wooden siding and also a few homes constructed of vinyl. And existing residences along Gurkin Road are oriented to face Gurkin Road. At that, I'll move on to the development plan conditions. Number one, minimum square feet for a house shall be 1,650. Number two, all block foundations shall not be plain-faced and shall use either split-face block, brick, or stone. Number three, no manufactured homes shall be allowed. Number four, houses must face the street. Number five, vinyl siding shall be allowed and matches the surrounding area. Number six, the density of this development is to be low-density to match nearby developments. Number seven, the use of this development shall be single-family. Number eight, access to the development will be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Number nine, each lot shall obtain a permit from the Barren River District Health Department for septic system approval prior to recordation of a plat. Number 10, the front building setback line shall be 60 feet from the property line. On page four, you find there the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 12 items. This application complied with three of them. And the ones that are left up to you, much like the last application, LU 111 and 112, which deal with the future land use map, and LU 113 with compatibility. LU 2, if the proposal was a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. NCR 24, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development will incre- or, sorry, preserve and enhance the Gurkin Community. NCR 241, is the, I'm sorry, it does comply with that. Moving on to the next one, HN 21 and HN 4, Planning Commission should, should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And sorry, I will go back to 241 and have a minor correction. Located in the area where infrastructure, some infrastructure already exists, and this body should determine if the proposed development will result in an increased amount of pressure, development pressure on the countryside. Going back to page one, I'll read through the points to consider. This body should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the Flume meets the criteria. The Flume Amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the Flume and rural density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, and the proposed general development plan complies with some of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. Compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the Planning Commission. So that is all I have. The applicants are here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have any questions? No questions, thank you, ma'am. Anything the applicant would like to add? Do we have any questions for the applicant? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition? Would like before, we need to act on the Flume Amendment request first, and go to the zone change after that.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use amendment, future land use map amendment, docket number 2003 Flume. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witness in this public hearing.
Thank you, we need a second? Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Madison.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried, and now we'll act on the zone change request.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202004Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the, with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence, testimony, and witnesses in this public hearing.
Thank you, we need a second? Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld. Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Vitale. Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Next item, docket number 202005Z County. Edmund Walker Kinzer Jr. has, excuse me, filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately two acres located at 490 Farley Lane from agriculture to rural residential with a general development plan. Have the staff report, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Runner, Commissioners. We had a pre-application conference for this property outlined in yellow on November 26, 2019. Again, the applicant's proposing to rezone approximately two acres of a 13-acre tract at 490 Farley Lane from agriculture to rural residential to get one additional lot. Second home is already underway for a family member on the agriculture zone lot before understanding that a permit was needed, a zone change was needed, and a plat needed to be recorded to put it on its own lot. So this process will hopefully get everything on the, on the proper track for that, that to happen at the applicant's request. Looking, again, the existing zoning is agriculture, which is the original designation of the property. The existing land use is agriculture, and the proposed, proposed land use, of course, is single-family residential. The future land use is shown as low-density residential, and the proposed rural residential zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in that low-density Flume designation. There is the rezoning plat. There is the rezoning plat exhibit from Crow Wheeler. I will be fairly brief on this application, but as always, if you have any questions, that's fine, but I'm just gonna move on to page two. Site characteristics review, the only thing I'll note there, under transportation infrastructure, Farley Lane is a county-maintained rural local roadway, has 50 feet of right-of-way, but the pavement width is only 14 feet. But the Warren County Public Works was consulted, since it's only one additional lot. Didn't feel like that was a big issue, but I did wanna note that that 14 feet of pavement width is all that the wider road is currently. The general development plan conditions submitted by the applicant to help address other compatibility issues, I will go through those quickly. Number one, no mobile or manufactured homes will be permitted on the property. Number two, in the event the existing residence is ever replaced, any new residence on the property will contain a minimum of 1,500 square feet of conditioned living space. Number three, in the event that the existing residence is ever replaced, the foundation on any new residence shall not include exposed plain-faced block. Number four, the existing residence will utilize the existing septic system located on the property. In event that residence is ever replaced, the Barren River District Health Department shall inspect the current system and/or issue a permit for a new septic system on the property. Number five, the existing access to the property will be utilized, and any future modifications will be coordinated by the Warren County Public Works Department. Number six, existing vegetation on the property will be maintained to the greatest extent possible. The focus 2030 category review, there were 13 items evaluated. Six were found to be in compliance. The remaining seven were up to the planning commission to determine compliance. Most of those have went through already tonight, so I won't repeat those. So I'll just end with the points to consider on page one. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map and the low-density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review, and the final one is that the general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility, and does meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, with the exception noted of the 14-foot Farley Lane. Be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant's here, if you have questions for them.
Sir, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Peterson? No questions, thank you, sir. See anything the applicant would like to add? Nothing, do we have any questions for the applicant? Do we have any opposition to this request? Questions, no opposition? Can I ask for a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 202005ZCO. Based on the testimony and the documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion included summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, we need a second?
Agreed.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Vitale? Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried, our recommendation will be for approval, thank you. Next item, 202006ZBG, Mugget Ram Incorporated and Mr. Patel have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 1.22 acres located at 701 and 711 Boat Landing Road with frontage on Double Springs Road and Kentucky Highway 185 from RM4, which is multifamily residential and heavy industrial, to highway business with a general development plan. Have the staff report for Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on June 20th of last year, in 2019, regarding the properties you just mentioned, located on Boat Landing Road. The properties are located at the intersection of Double Springs Road and Kentucky Highway 185. Just across the screen, or off the screen there, is Sugar Maple Square, just to kind of get everyone oriented to where the property is. The current zoning, as you mentioned, is split between RM4 and heavy industrial. Heavy industrial is the original zoning for the properties. A portion of the properties was rezoned from industrial to multifamily in 1969, and then both properties were converted to RM4 and heavy industrial from R4 and heavy industrial through an amendment to the zoning ordinance in 2001, when we adopted our current zoning ordinance. The current use of the property is industrial, and you can see that there are a mixture of uses in the area. We've got multifamily to the south, single-family to the south, with some industrial kind of picking up here along Double Springs Road. Obviously, Sugar Maple Square is commercial, and then north of the property, we find a mix of single-family residential and multifamily residential uses. The current future land use designation for the property is industrial. This land use designation consists of areas developed or suitable for the uses permitted in light industrial and heavy industrial zoning categories. Because such areas require rail and truck access, future industrial development will continue to gravitate to the rail corridors and I-65 interchanges. Complimentary service and commercial uses are allowed up to 25% of the total contiguous area. Compatibility should be assessed by applying policies in LU 113 in conjunction with a general development plan. This is the general development plan that was submitted by the applicants. Just a brief summary of their request. The applicants are proposing to redevelop the properties with a new building that will include a convenience store, gas station, and relocation of the existing Canarnys Liquor Store. So if I go back to the aerial here, the existing liquor store is here, and so that would be relocated into the new building that's proposed. Again, along with some extra space for a convenience store and gas station, along with that liquor store being relocated. Under the site characteristics review, under the lot sizes and setbacks, this is the proposed layout. Setbacks will adhere to the requirements for the HB zone, including an additional setback here along this property line. If you go back to the land use map, you'll see that there's a single-family use to the north, and the zoning ordinance does require an additional setback. The proposed building setback shown here would meet that additional setback requirement. Under transportation infrastructure, again, I mentioned that the property is located at the intersection of Double Springs Road and Kentucky Highway 185. Moving on to the site design and compatibility review. Under surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that the surrounding area is comprised of a mixture of one- and two-story buildings, as well as a mixture of commercial, industrial, and residential structures. Under building materials, structures in the vicinity are comprised of a mixture of vinyl, brick, metal, and modern masonry materials. Under signage, the proposed HB zone allows freestanding signage up to 30 feet in height with a maximum sign-face area of 150 square feet. This is characteristic of the type of signage you would find along Scottsville Road. Staff has noted that the majority of the existing freestanding signage in the vicinity is much shorter and smaller in height and sign-face area. There are a few existing pole signs and monument-style signs that incorporate a brick or stone base located in the vicinity, and the applicant did agree in the development plan conditions to limit freestanding signage to a maximum of 20 feet in height, but did not specify the type of sign, for example, a pole or a monument-style sign. And they also did not specify a maximum square footage for signage to be constructed on the property. On page three, we reference Section 314 of the zoning ordinance, which outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. You'll see in letter B that exceptions to this requirement may be approved after consultation between the applicant and the affected agencies. In this case, it would be the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the Bowling Green Public Works Department. And when a project's traffic impact can be clearly anticipated without a traffic impact study and all of the parties involved, including the transportation agencies and the applicant, are able to negotiate an appropriate mitigation, a traffic impact study may not be necessary. Both impacted transportation agencies, both the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the Bowling Green Public Works Department, agreed to waive the traffic impact study requirement in lieu of a commitment from the applicant that certain transportation improvements are implemented if the proposed development is approved. And those improvements are outlined in that bullet point in the middle of page three. Access to the property shall be limited to three access points. You'll see those shown on the preliminary development plan, so you'd have one, two, three access points. From Kentucky Highway 185, there shall be no more than two access points, one full-access point to the north, and a right-in-only near the intersection. So this would be the full access that's proposed, and this may be permitted as a right-in-only access point. There shall also be a right-in, right-out onto Double Springs Road. That would be this access point here. All access shall be coordinated with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet District III Office for access onto Kentucky Highway 185, and the City of Bowling Green Public Works Department for access onto Double Springs Road. Moving on to the development plan conditions. Number one looks at building orientation. The primary structure on the property will be developed with two front facades, one facing Double Springs Road and the other facing Kentucky Highway 185. Number two outlines permitted building materials. Front facades will be brick, manufactured stone, glass, or other fiber-seamanticious board. The roof may be either shingle or metal. The rear and side facades may be metal. Number three, hours of operation will be no earlier than 5:00 a.m. or later than 12:00 midnight. Number four, all service utilities will be located underground. Number five, the maximum building height shall be 30 feet to be single-story. Six looks at access, that's the same requirement that I just referenced for the waiver of the traffic impact study, so I'm not gonna repeat number six. Number seven addresses tree preservation. Mature perimeter vegetation to the north and west will be preserved to the greatest extent. In areas that the vegetation is lost, new plantings will be installed that comply with the landscape requirements of the zoning ordinance. Number eight, prohibited uses shall include bingo parlor, pawn shop, tattoo parlor, adult entertainment, or any sale or display of pornographic materials or adult books, vehicle repair, or vehicle sales. And number nine, as I mentioned earlier, signage for the property will be no higher than 20 feet. Moving on to the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 19 items. We found nine of those items to be in compliance. 10 of those items, the planning commission should determine compliance. First, LU 113, which looks at compatibility of the proposed development. Next, LU 2, which looks at quality of development. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Next, LU 2.5, which looks at protection of established neighborhoods. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will protect nearby established neighborhoods. LU 252 and HN 1.2 look at infill development and compatibility. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. LU 253, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is an opportunity for revitalization and redevelopment. Next, NCR 2.5, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development will promote the economic viability and vitality of the historic Delafield neighborhood. Next, HN 1 and HN 1.3, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character, pattern of development, and urban design within the area, and if it will strengthen existing neighborhoods and districts. And last, for the planning commission to consider, ED 1, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy. With that, I'll wrap up with the points to consider on page one. First, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map and the industrial category. Next, the proposed development complies with a majority of the site characteristics and site design review criteria, with considerations noted relating to signage, and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That's all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt?
It's really a downgrade, isn't it?
It is a downzoning for a portion of the property. I can go back to the zoning map. It's split-zoned, heavy industrial, RM4, so part is going up, part's going down. Yep.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have anything the applicant would like to add? Name and address, please.
Ryan Shirley, 1136 South Park Drive. And I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
We're just here to answer any questions you all may have, or if there's anybody from the audience who has any questions, but I think the staff did a good job on the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Questions?
Can you tell us what, I'm confused. There's a little white area to our left that has the little dot-dot-dots. What is that?
That would be the area we're proposing for a dumpster.
Dumpster? And then what is the orange area that's dot-dot-dot? Is that where the gas pumps are?
That would be the gas canopy.
Gas pumps?
That's just a hatch we have in our drawings to indicate concrete versus asphalt.
Are they gonna tear all this down and start over? I thought so, 'cause it's kinda messy.
How's it gonna go? First time I saw those, we're like in 1985. And they've been repainted at least twice since then.
Do, any other questions, Commissioners? Do you have any questions from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir.
My name's Abraham Williams, Director of the Housing Authority, 1601 Crown Ridge Court.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
My other concern is about the lighting. We have apartments directly across the street from there, public housing units, at least 75 on that side of the street. I'm concerned about the lighting and the traffic in that particular area, and with the lighting up 20 feet, and with that signage, how will it affect our units in that area?
Shirley.
Our lighting is gonna be required to be directed downward under the site and not out. I think we're gonna have a maximum of one-foot candle at the property line. Half-foot candle at the property line. So any new lighting is gonna be contained within that property. We can't be increasing it. And then, I think your closest residence is probably 100 feet or more from where our proposed gas canopy is, on the south side of Double Springs Road.
But also, we're only probably behind it, oh, Delafield Community Center.
Yes.
And I'm very concerned by that, with maybe noise or it's signage there also.
We're gonna have to have a landscape buffer. This is gonna be considered a, well, we have to screen the vehicle use area. So we do have to add more vegetation, where there isn't any now. We're gonna be trying to preserve the existing vegetation to the greatest extent possible. And anything that comes down, we'll have to go back in and add more vegetation as well.
My concern, how much vegetation are you gonna add? Because our building is right on the line with yours, within 10 feet.
If you notice the drawing up here, the dash lines that are just to the left, that's your actual travelway, and then your building starts just a little bit left of that. I don't have a pointer. Or do we? You have a travelway here. Your building is in this area. Go back to the aerial.
One more, one more over. There you go.
We're still gonna have a travelway. Your travelway is gonna be between this development. This area, we're not proposing to do any development in. We may have to use some of that area for stormwater, but then we also have to screen it from your use as well. Is that any to your question?
I get my only concern, again, is stormwater. We have a playground right there, next to the building, and what would happen with that water coming up the hill to us, toward our playground?
We can't release the stormwater at any kind of a faster rate than what it's going there now. So we'll have to do a detention area to contain the water. Once it gets to its volume, then it can go back out at the pre-developed rate. But we- But we can't increase the amount of water coming onto you, to that playground. And then we'll be, except we'll be adding some additional vegetation along through here as well.
If I have follow-up questions, can we come back or?
I'm hoping that you would be able to meet with the developer, and maybe he can help you with any questions that you would have. That's a possibility, yes, sir.
Are you talking about tonight, Abraham?
Not tonight, no. We can do it later on.
Just, just something later, yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I would be happy to meet with you.
Okay, thanks so much, sure.
Thank you, sir.
Hi.
Is there any other commitment for a sign? And where are you thinking about a sign, or what type of sign? I'm not seeing anything about a sign on your plans.
At this point, we don't know exactly what we want to do for signage.
Twenty feet, isn't it?
Yeah, maximum would be twenty feet height.
Is it an LED sign, Brian?
We don't know yet.
Know where you're wanting to place it? Are you going to put it on the building, or are you going to put in?
We'll have building signage, but the other option would be somewhere in this corner, right here. Does the mouse show up on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. Or in this area.
So, the units that Abraham is talking about are down at the, he's talking about across the Double Spring Road, correct?
Correct.
So, what I think, okay, can you go back to where you just were? I would like to ask that the signage be put in the second spot you just pointed to.
Rather than going down to the corner, keep it up.
Yes, I think that would protect, I think that would protect his housing down there for, I mean, if it's an LED. I mean, we all know how bright an LED sign can be, so would he be, would y'all be agreement to put the sign up in that area?
Can you point where you're talking about?
There.
Oh, yeah, that would be a good spot.
That gets it away from the housing and?
Gets it away from the corner.
Yep.
That would be on 185, right?
Well, they both, you've got to be a little more specific, I think, because they both could be on 185, you could.
Furthest from Double Spring.
The signage would be located north of the right-hand axis off of Highway 185.
Perfect. Perfect. You got that, Ham?
Are you thinking a post sign, or are you thinking a monument sign, or you all just don't have any?
We have not gotten to the signage point yet. We're agreed to come down to a maximum of twenty feet in height from the allowable thirty-five feet. Right. Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. Yes, sir.
Your client to come to the podium and let him agree to this change.
Go ahead and get you sworn in, your name and address.
Mark Patel, 400 Castle Big Court.
And you swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have you heard the commitments that have been made by Mr. Shirley for the location of signage?
Yes.
And in particular, do you agree that the signage for the property will be no taller than twenty feet and will be located on the north side of the right-in-only access from Highway 185?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. You saying on the sides, you're talking about metal. Will metal be facing the housing development?
Housing development is to the south over here. This is a community center, which is existing, dark gray metal siding, also has a metal roof. So we, we would like to be able to have the opportunity to do metal on these two sides.
Those two sides, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Thank you, sir. Do we have any opposition to this request? No other questions, no opposition, then I'd ask for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket 2020-08ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions presented in this staff report, along with the change in the development plan. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert. Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried, our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, sir. It's good to see you this evening. Last item on the agenda is 2020-07Z County. Robert and Mary Brown have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately two acres located at 4325 Old Scottsville Road with frontage on Shady Lane from agriculture to rural residential with a general development plan. Staff report, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you again, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on January 24th of 2020 for the property you see outlined in yellow. Again, the rezoning, a two-acre portion of property at 4325 Old Scottsville Road, again, from agriculture to rural residential to subdivide off a two-acre lot for one additional home. The existing zoning is agriculture, which is the only zone that it has ever been in our records. The existing land use is agriculture, and they're proposing to go to single-family residential. The future land use of the designation on the property is low-density residential, and the proposed rural residential zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation. And then I will, there's the rezoning exhibit, just outlining that boundary. And then I will put the concept plan from ACES on the screen here. I'm going to go ahead and skip on to the general development plan conditions on page three and just read those, which will address a lot of the compatibility things that we typically go over. Number one, the proposed residence shall be a minimum of 2,500 square feet of living space excluding garage. Number two, the proposed residence shall have a minimum of a two-car garage. Number three, building materials shall be brick, stone, or fiber-cement board. All foundation walls shall have a brick veneer. No metal or vinyl siding shall be permitted. Number four, building orientation shall be facing towards Shady Lane. Number five, the proposed driveway entrance location shall be coordinated with the Warren County Public Works Road Department prior to construction. Number six, the proposed residence shall have an onsite septic evaluation for a septic tank leach, leach aid field completed and approved by the Brown River District Health Department prior to obtaining a building permit. Number seven, any sinkholes that develop during construction shall be repaired. Number eight, the front's building setback line shall be a minimum of seventy-five feet. And number nine, no mobile homes or manufactured homes shall be permitted on the subject property. Moving on to the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated twelve items. Five were found to be in compliance with the remaining seven were being up to this body for compliance, and none were found to be out of compliance. So again, I'll just finish with the points to consider. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map and the low-density residential category. The development does comply with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, and the general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility, and does meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. I will be happy to go over any of the specifics of the staff report or answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? No questions? Any questions for the applicant? Anything you'd like to add? Do we have any opposition to this request? No opposition, no questions, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2020-07Z-CO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Unseld. Commissioner Clark.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Vitale. Beth, excuse me. Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, motion carried, our recommendation will be for approval. New business, sir. Anything? Anything from the Commissioners? Nothing? Meeting's adjourned, thank you all.